Call me need orders and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of America, the free, democratic, and honest, one nation, under God, and with all due respect, for our citizens, for our home. Alright. Welcome. Got review and updates? Keith, can we start?
Not something that would work because of the holidays. Other than the fact that I went to the parade. And I thought there was good turnout, and it's cold.
It was cold, yeah.
So, but now, I, I, that route had to be really long to walk that far.
Yeah, it was from, it was from Plaza, yeah.
Oh my gosh, and then I had some people that were in the parade told me later that this should have had more porta potties set up for them because they started staging at three. And so, anyway, somebody can think about that, and I guess if that route stays the same, I'll go print that out. Other than that, no. Good thanks, Keith.
Alan, that's in the report.
Okay.
Besides, you know, phone calls and texts from constituents asking about property taxes. And I, like I told them, until I hear that from the company that it was a software glitch, I don't, not, I don't think that's the proper answer we should be putting out, so.
Well, I think learning to talk about that is definitely today.
That's about it?
I only had one meeting last week, and that was with the Vice President of Stormlot, Tracy Alroch. She just wanted to touch base and see how everything was going, and I told her appreciated Tracy Durand coming in and giving the updates and keeping us abreast of all the good things that are happening up there. You know, I, you know, I look back on the last couple of years, and I'm like, I'm just so glad that we did what we did and were able to come to that Grammy with Stormlot because I think things are, have greatly improved up there. So, yeah. We're interviewing this afternoon for a childcare champion for the coalition who got the grant to, yeah. So, yeah, we're excited about that. We have two good applicants, so it's gonna be really hard, but so we're gonna do that interview today. I don't know if a decision will be made, but we're gonna do the interviews today. So, yeah, so I'm looking forward to that. So, you got anything?
For the agenda today?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I reviewed said that, I totally forgot.
Crystal sent me an email. She said, I need all these executive sessions, you know, for your, not only personnel, whatever. Well, I didn't pay much attention to it, and on the subject line it said 12-9 meaning. I sent it out to her twice, whatever, she never changed it, so she's keeping...
Kristian's?
The one at 1:15 and the one at 1:25.
Okay.
One in the morning. We are not going to do that one at 11:45. I'm not sure about 11:30, she didn't tell me. But at 11:45, Patrick Smith was coming in from K-CAM to present that check for the risk avoidance.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember Gary was one of the one we interviewed.
Yeah, so he's coming in to do that, so it worked out that we're not over there, but executive session. Okay, that's it.
So, you need, we need a motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah, and then just take out that executive session and add Patrick.
Take out the 11:45?
Yeah. Oh, and then 1:35, we don't need to.
Yeah, she didn't say anything.
I would make that motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Post same sign, margin carries. Thank you.
Are you guys here for public comment?
No, they just came back.
You just came? We were just, we were both voted in for our township.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. So, we just decided to...
Come see what it's all about.
Sure. No, we're glad you're here.
Can I have your names? Please, for the minute.
I'm Laurie Cook.
L-A-U-R?
I-E.
Okay. Have you, you have a G at the end of your last name?
Yes.
Okay. And your name?
Stacy Cook.
S-T-A-C?
E-Y.
E-Y. Okay.
I've seen you guys busy for a while, I wanna... Okay, we'll all be back tomorrow. Thank you. I thought the train was this month. Oh, I thought it was this weekend. I'm supposed to get that to you. I have one on my head.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Crystal Malchos, HR Director. This is Department Head, out of office notifications. And then this is for the evaluation later today.
What about the, do we have two more or no more?
No.
So, we don't need to have any, okay.
Just this afternoon.
Okay.
Just the first two this afternoon. The other two were inadvertently put on the wrong week. They were supposed to be next week on the ninth.
Okay, so we only have two today?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we've got the clerk's office at the very end to go over her goals and stuff.
Okay, awesome.
And then I set out a reminder today to those that had an RSVP for our department staff meeting today. I've heard back from the Health Department, they will be here, but I haven't heard back from the other ones that I see CGU on as that I hadn't had any RSVPs from them. So, I'm hoping to hear back. I will be asking Tiffany to order pizza at, I think that's what you guys said, right? Have pizza?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll be asking her to order that probably around 11:00 to make sure that it's here at or shortly afternoon for our working, work session, lunch, and our continuity of operations plan. I know that Trish, Tammy, Jeremy, and myself will be attending KAC tomorrow through Thursday. I'll be heading out tonight, being on the board. I have requirements that require me to be there first thing in the morning, and a little short on volunteers, so board members got volunteered to assist with some other things. So, instead of just introducing one speaker, I've got three different times that I'll be up introducing speakers. So, I hope to come back next Monday with an update on the wonderful educational opportunities that we had at the KAC. And we're back to full staff in the office. So, that's good. And we're preparing for this Friday's paycheck, and then we've got one more this year, and we'll start the W2s and get everything rolling for 2025. And as far as I know, things are going well. We haven't had anybody require, say that they have any issues or anything with what's going on, so working closely with other departments. So, that's basically all I have today, unless you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I'd like to have the performance evaluations a little earlier again.
Not a problem, okay. Last week being a holiday?
Yeah.
And we were, had an issue with one of the invoices trying to find a difference of $741.59 that we've been looking for for two weeks. We were a little distracted on that, but yes, I will get the other ones to you before the end of this week, so you've at least got the weekend.
Okay, great.
To go over them.
Awesome.
Anything else?
So, Crystal, you having any executive sessions this morning? Are you having the one at 11:30?
No, just the, the one...
Just the ones in the afternoon?
Just two of the three in the afternoon, that's it. I could come and waste time, but that's okay.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I'll, I'll be spending enough time with the commission today.
I know.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Did you guys get lunch today for the working? I just need to know whether to include you for the pizza.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, I'll be here.
For you, the house, sorry.
Oh, you guys.
House is here. Group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good morning, Commissioners, Tammy Robinson, Finance Director. I don't have much this morning. I was just gonna let you know that I would be out Tuesday through Thursday for the KAC, and then I'll be back on Friday. That's good. That's it? That's it?
Wow, that was easy.
Oh, this is cool.
We had a very short week last week, and... Just work through stuff, so.
Oh, you did send, I didn't get to read it, though. You sent something that you and Caitlin were working on.
Oh, yes, I guess I can...
Talk about the bids on the website.
Can tell you that we do have that bid posted on the website now, so it's just directing if anybody has bids or RFPs that they're going out for to contact either Caitlin, Crystal, or myself, and we'll assist them in getting that posted out online. As part of our updated procurement code, that was one of the things that we had, is that we would put all of our bids online.
And that's by Kansas law or...
It doesn't say that you have to have it online, but it does support the bid law of you allowing anybody to have the opportunity to bid, so if it's on our website, it's very public and can be pulled anywhere, and so I feel like we're definitely meeting our, the statutory requirements to let everyone have a chance on bidding.
I agree, 'cause I've had people question of like, who we pick to send bids to, and like, you know, and there might be some organizations that we don't know about that are not getting opportunities, so at least with that, then we can say it's on the...
And there's, sometimes it's in the paper, but again, not everybody takes the paper, and so there's that as well, but, you know, they can go out and do a web search and pull up a ping on bids, so if anybody's looking for specific ones, they should be able to pull it pretty easy.
Yeah.
I think it probably ought to be emphasized with the media, informing the public, you know, that that's where to go, is to the website.
Yeah, I mean, we'll continue to also put it, because I think Corey's group also puts it like on JC Post.
Sometimes not all of them.
And so, it, you know, they'll have those kinds of things as well, but, I mean, I can certainly, in the news...
And if we post it, I mean, we can always just, you know, tell them, hey, we post a bid with all the regulations on the website too. I mean, they have to have some kind of responsibility of, you know, if they're in business, that they're gonna, you know, reach out and check on that too.
So, it'll be, we also, we have a page, just like the finance page, but we also have the calendar on there as well, just like I do, so that on the date that the bids are opened, the documents will be on that date, so they can easily pull them. There's also a spot on the page that they can click into to view any bids that are open. And then there will be the date that they close, and it'll tell them that date for that project is the closed date. And then the open, when the bids are open, there'll also be the date highlighted for that, and then when they intend to bring it back to the commission for their final determination. So, I think it'll be good if, you know, we can't make people use it, but it's there, it's available. We're doing everything we can to give everyone an opportunity to bid on that, so. But yeah, we worked on that last week, last Tuesday, and got the page up, so that is a good thing.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, that's it for now. Thanks. Hello.
Morning.
Hi, Gary. Thanks for coming in.
No problem. Just print some stuff off for you guys.
Yeah, I'll do it.
I think it's one for you too.
Betsy, need a copy?
What?
Copy?
You, who else needs it?
Betsy.
Okay. Good morning. Ready, Teresa?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Fire's here, the date for 24, we're right at 99. Same time last year, up to the first of December was 1:20, so we're, we're still down. We did eight calls in November, including two vehicle fires within the last three days. One completely destroyed, and the other one just minor damage on a car hauler. This coming Sunday at 5:30, we'll have our annual appreciation for our volunteers. If you haven't signed up yet, let me know.
I'll be out of town.
Okay, okay. We've got you, so Alex, are you gonna make? Okay, okay. But we'll be doing a program, giving out our annual awards to the volunteers. Right now, we're sitting, I think, right about 100 people gonna be in attendance there, so I will let you know probably later on this week or next week, we're gonna cover Riley County for a little bit. They had a firefighter pass away over the weekend, so. Don't know a lot of details, but as soon as we know what date we'll be covering, we'll call you and let you know.
Was he active or retired?
No, he was active.
He was, he was active, he, I've known him for about 40 years, so. We're in the process of putting in for an AirePak grant in the amount of $824,000. This would replace all of our AirePaks, Granby Plaza's AirePaks, and City Milford AirePaks. Most of these AirePaks are 18 to 20 years of old age. Where we worked with both Granby and Milford. We're using a grant writer out of New York. They've got an 85 to 90% success rate. It's costing us $3,300 for them to help write it and stuff. They're only doing 20 of these AFG grants, and all they do is fire grants and stuff. We're one of 20 that they're doing this year. $824,000, it's a 5% match. And nice thing is, if we're successful in getting this grant, their fee will come out of that money and stuff. There, there, I liked when we talked to them about their success rate, and they, they're retired firefighters, so they know what wording to put in on this, because AirePak grants are hard to get through this, but the 5% match, so what we're looking at on ours would be 55 AirePaks, 110 bottles, you get two for each AirePak based on your number of seats in your trucks, and we can put them in all of our trucks. 65 masks, 65 bags, and then two RIT kits or... There, if somebody gets hurt inside of a fire and the firefighters go in and rescue them, this kit gives them an extra mask and stuff.
Yeah.
And so, we would have two of them, City of Granby would have one of them. But like I said, our cost on the grant writers, $3,300, and each of those departments are paying $1,300 on their part of the grant writing. So, on our, our, our share of the whole grant, if we get it, would be $603,000. We, 5% match would be $30,000, and the federal government would pick up $572,946. It's a pretty, pretty good investment, because AirePaks are, we're bottling two, for two bottles in one pack frame is $10,000.
How long do they like, usually last?
15 years, roughly.
If you're lucky. I mean, they're, they're always updating, you know. The problem with our packs right now is our packs have kind of been gathered up from here and there and all that, and I, truthfully, I didn't realize just how old they were till we started checking. We're gonna average, like Gary said, 18 to 20 years old, and our guy that comes in and services them every year was telling us it's time, because they can't get parts, just like everything else. You get age on it, and then they quit making the parts and...
Are we working on a, a capital replacement plan for that too? Like with the, the, you know, as far as so we don't have to replace all of them in case we don't get a grant? You know what I'm saying?
We're, we're looking at that, and also, we're, we're looking ahead for that and vehicles. We're good on our other equipment right now, it's the vehicles, but the AirePaks are our main thing, so.
Sure, I mean, that's...
But yeah, because when you look at that price, just to replace a few of them, pretty well takes a lot of money out of our budget, so.
No, I know, that's why, if we don't get the grant, we need to start working on a plan to replace those.
Right. What we've, what we've done in the past is we have bought some from MES, we had some donated to us by Salina, but even, even then, they're already 10 years old.
Already, yeah.
Yeah, they're headed down the road.
I just don't want to be in a position of having, you know, of having to replace them all again at one point in time.
Substantial, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, Manhattan's in the process of, they got, they're getting all new AirePaks, should be coming in this month and stuff, and we're in line if we want to purchase any of their used ones and stuff, and I think theirs are eight, eight or 10 years old, so they'd still have five, six years.
Yeah, just in case we don't get that grant.
Yeah, yeah, you never know on these grants, and we won't know on this till probably summer next year by the time. By doing a grant with all three departments, if we were to do it by ourselves, once we submit it, and it's due by December the 20th, then it goes to a computer scoring system, and they rank them, and then from there, it goes to peer review if you can score so high with a regional grant, which this is... With a regional grant, which this is, you bypass the scoring system, you go straight to peer review. So you get a little bit better chance of getting it, so.
Let's say you're successful in doing this. What do you do with the old ones?
Good question. Good question. Because of their age, nobody wants them.
But there are some departments way out western Kansas or someplace, we would turn them into forestry and the forestry would divvy them out to other places that can't. Some of these departments out west, they've been tied with it for years, five thousand, ten thousand dollars. So of course they can't afford them and are they really able to?
Up to a point.
If you, if you can find parts.
Yeah. Yeah. The past three years, four years, we've had MES coming in servicing all of our packs every year, which is per NFPA. And each year we end up with one or two that they just can't repair. Like I said, we've been able to replace quite a few of them just by donation. But there again, you're not getting something that's gonna last you ten years.
We've given you each copy of the fireworks resolution, the current resolution. Current, I went over this, looked at what the city had. The city is now going July first through July fourth. And sort of, and this is for you to review and then we'll look at it first of January or first meeting, maybe try to get it approved. But currently we go through July fifth and my problem is a lot of people don't shoot off on July the fifth and stuff. And I'm afraid if we don't mirror what the city has on dates, we're gonna have people going out in the rurory and shooting off fireworks, especially when it's dry conditions and stuff. You remember what it was like before the city allowed fireworks in the city? We were out constantly. But anything in red is some additions or changes we want to do. There was one place.
What was the fee of the city? Is it five hundred like?
Fifteen hundred on theirs. Go back to section fourteen on the next last page. Currently that stuff in yellow is highlighted in our deal and the way we read it, and I don't know, Betsy.
Yeah, I emailed you back what it was later this morning, so.
I think, I think that needs to get out of there because the way I'm reading it, somebody could go out in the rurory and shoot fireworks off whenever.
Anywhere.
Anyway. In the rurory.
Did you get my email this morning, did you read it?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that does allow people to go shoot them off whatever, as long as it's agriculture. I think it is long, it's own agriculture. My only thought was that we should add a day on it at the beginning or a day on it at the end so you can guarantee somebody a Friday or Saturday night if they were having a party or something. Another thing I thought about is I know in some other counties, it's a free permit, but if you're gonna have a fireworks, like a personal fireworks display at your house, you, you know, either email it in or whatever, or Kirk's office and fill out a permit in that way. You guys, the, the fire department have at least a.
Right, right, right. Not when it's in here to, to do a permit for, and we've done them before.
Like for special, not during fourth of July like.
No, just for fourth of July, so that they know like, whoa, that neighborhood out in Rockwood is having a ton of, you know, fireworks going off.
If somebody does, does, does a big display, yeah, if I can't see it, we get two or three families together.
Right.
Because it's, people are gonna be shooting them off everywhere anyway, so.
Well, I know one year we used to have folks gathering in there, and we'd always do our own. And one year we gave them a game that night. And so we heard that Roger Bennett would do it and of course he's licensed. I mean, I don't know how that would put in.
Yeah, that's in one of the sections there about a public display. Section fifteen. This also allows if somebody's having a wedding or something, that they can apply for a fire permit or fireworks display permit through us too. Mostly if we get somebody like Bennett or somebody coming out, they've got the insurance that that's asking for. And we also have the mayor's state law too.
Under section fourteen, Betsy, you don't think it'd just be better to get that completely out of there? Instead of just adding a date?
Well, I mean. So section. Section fourteen, to me reads that as long as it's own ag, it's a free fire zone any time. But if you're just living in a rural area. And maybe it's, you know, rural residential, it's not, it's on ag, then it's July first or July fourth.
Well, in state law says anywhere from June twenty-seventh through July the fifth. So we still gotta follow the state law too, so that's why I think they, that highlighted yellow needs to come out of there.
I mean, if you wanted to give them, I guess, more leeway, you could leave that in there and say in accordance with.
State rate.
Blue state rate.
The dates set forth by statute, by state statute unless.
So basically you're not allowed to shoot them off outside that time period.
Right.
So you can shoot them off on New Year's Eve or.
Or when chiefs win Super Bowls, that kind of stuff like people do now, right? That's against the law, it's on July, June twenty-seventh through July the fifth. Let you guys look at those and.
Yeah, I'm not sure I want to keep that in there either. Cause I mean, I, I think there's some places, I mean, off of Spring Valley Road, I think it's considered ag on some of those. And that's pretty close to houses and stuff. Well, yeah, I think, I just think we need to look at it a little more.
Okay. Has the city refreshed theirs?
They want to have them did theirs, like maybe at the September, October, somehow it's fallen to like.
So as far as dates.
That's the dates that they do. I think the only thing.
The first and the fourth?
Yeah.
Because right now, people usually don't start shooting them off July first anyway, even though they can start on the twenty-seventh. And then we don't see very much on the fifth, so. And that way we're staying in line with what the city's, city's doing. So people don't.
When they can start selling?
Twenty-seven. Currently. Right, right, right. Selling and shooting off is, is the same timeframe, twenty-seven through the fifth.
What kind of policing do we have on this?
They could, they can be issued citations if they don't follow.
From you or the sheriff?
We can't write tickets.
Yeah, sheriff's department.
The sheriff's department.
That'd be an NTA, wouldn't it?
Be an NTA, post you can't shoot them off on federal property, which includes Milford Lake. Or the, or on Fort Riley's.
Is there a license behind them?
Yeah, I was just getting ready to ask that, cause I mean, if fifteen hundred dollars that people are paying the city, why would we not mirror that?
We used to be, we used to be at a hundred. When we started, when we first started doing the fireworks deals under deputy, it was fifty dollars and we went up to a hundred.
Yeah, that was a long, long time ago.
And that's, and that's when the city wouldn't allow.
Right, right. Because we go out usually a couple times and look at the fireworks stands and if we get a complaint, we go back out and check them and stuff, so.
Last, or this year I inspected four, where we've had five before. Bennett's got two.
Wholesale fireworks has that one on Elmdale and then Mattarousse.
Blockbuster.
Blockbuster.
Yeah, there are four. Those, yeah, those are our four that we have. I would say if we went that high on fee, we'd probably end up losing two of them pretty easy. Because Blockbuster doesn't make that much money off of them and probably one on Elmdale doesn't either.
Yeah.
But like you said, to make it comparable to the city, we can always raise it.
Yeah, I think fifteen hundred's too, too high though.
Well, I just asked. I guess you can start out here and see how it goes. But like, first of all, you know, if we're on a mayor of the city on our base, I don't know.
Okay. We'll come back on first Monday in January and do that, so. Our second annual auxiliary bake sale will be December thirteenth and fourteenth, a week from this Friday, Saturday, ten to six and then nine to twelve. And they're also doing some homemade crafts in there too, so.
And that's where.
It's gonna be our office in that.
For the public.
Right, right, right. And they've got flyers out and stuff and they'll start advertising that a little bit more this week.
This starts at ten on Friday?
Starts at ten on Friday, ten to six on Friday and twelve and nine to noon on Saturday. Risk management, we got all of our required meetings done, all the required departments attended those. Kurt's gonna start inspections this week, I'm going around and getting that paperwork done. And we've got the presentation coming in about an hour for that and meet the new risk management person. Our annual local emergency planning committee meeting is December the nineteenth at five PM. We'll go over part of the emergency operation plan and there's a few changes we need to look at on that and stuff. And Alex is your representative on that one. And then the last thing I've got is our Next Tech computer. Currently our contract with Next Tech does not mirror what the rest of the county is. They sent us a proposal, Tammy and I and Betsy have looked it over, made a few changes. This thing is for forty, forty-three months. So it'll tie in with what the contract is for the rest of the departments. Also, it went down a hundred and nine dollars and fifty-eight cents for my department instead of, they dropped it not, I think probably because they're putting everything together, so we'll be saving.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I mean, it makes more sense for us to bundle this instead of breaking up their own contract.
That's what it told one, one time.
So I think that was always the goal.
Right. So.
I think we need to get the, the cash basis law added to it.
Yeah, I emailed you with that one, which I, I asked.
Right, right. I will, I will call Jim, I might get back and try to get that done, but.
The other thing Betsy noted is, you know, they give us a contract for services, but they don't break out costs. They just give you what the total is. And so I think we may not be able to adjust it now, but definitely when we go to go back for contract, I will make sure that they give us an itemized cost of everything so that we have. Because I went back and looked at our contracts too and it was just, it gave us all the equipment and the equipment costs, but it didn't break out these other items.
And if you decide like you don't want part of the service, like you don't really need something, you can cancel it, but you're obligated to pay for it through the contract, like through the package, like the contract. So I just wanted to make sure everybody actually knows what.
Sure, but I think we do need to know because what if we're paying for something going forward?
Right, so to make sure they want everything that they're getting in that price.
Yeah. Well, and I know when we had ours, we did negotiate, I, I wanted to know what the cost was for some of those things because they did take a couple of things off and that's, I do need to look at ours and see if you have things on yours that are not included on ours, but. And they, too, the cost was so minimal, it didn't make a difference on the overall cost, but I, I do agree. I think it would be best to have them itemize it, just like CIC had to give us an itemization of all the costs.
I think that's all I've got today, so.
Then you'll be back.
I'll be back for that presentation, him and I will go over to that and then I'll be back to the public head meeting.
Yeah, I'd like Jim to add that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can just reference the one that they put it in on ours.
Okay, he put it in on yours. Okay, okay.
Oh, you don't, question I had, so this presentation, where does that money go? Does it go into your fund?
The risk management money.
Risk management?
The risk management goes back in the general fund.
Cause it, it comes, cause K-Camp we pay out of that.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it's reimbursement for the insurance you pay every year.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Is your contract there?
What?
Is the contract there? Is January good enough? Or do you need to get back on?
I don't, I don't know. I don't end up.
No, sure.
Okay. It's sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Trish, can I go ahead and do these minutes?
Sure.
We have them. Okay, Trish said they were good. He has grammatical errors, but then he wants to add where we were talking about the operational audit for the sheriff's department. He wants to add Commissioner Asher said based on the cost of the operational audit, we need to do more research. So I'll do that and the other ones weren't just grammatical, so minutes for the twenty-fifth.
I'm gonna go through.
Alex wasn't here or something.
Oh yeah, I forgot you weren't here. Second, all of them. Both same side, but she carries.
So Betsy, looking at this again in section two. I'm confused because Gary said they could sell them starting June twenty-seventh. And yet it reads that they can't start selling them until it's live.
Five hundred percent, too, I wondered if he does, which meaning that he can start selling them by the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what he meant, was that now you can start.
Yeah, he said the state allows the twenty-seventh.
Correct.
But, and I think what he was trying to say is you can start selling them, but you can't.
Yeah, I don't think we should let them sell them because people are gonna shoot them off if they buy them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why when I asked him, you know, when they start selling them, because if they start selling them, people are gonna shoot them.
Yeah, and they do start before July first and they buy them, so, yeah.
I mean, you know.
And I think that's been the whole thing. Is, you know, people are just, for so long of people getting, you know, and they live in. Cause I know they can go off in my neighborhood a lot. And it is a long time, the twenty seventh through July fifth is a long time.
I do think they should add a day on the front end or the back end of that, just so it'll get somebody. So there is a Friday or Saturday night. Cause like if, July fourth is on, well, let's say July first is Monday, right? July fourth is Thursday. So, I mean, most people are gonna go to work on Friday. So then they wouldn't actually have a weekend.
To shoot them off.
That they, that, you know, have a gathering and shoot them off. Or if you did a day before, or.
Then every year it's gonna be different.
Well, I, I know, but it'd give you a Friday or a Saturday, right? If you did five days instead of four. Yeah. Then you could, you could front load it or back load it.
Depending on when the holiday falls.
Yeah, I mean. You could just say June thirty, or you could say July fifth.
Hello, Cory. Hello, Jeremy.
This is your last one?
Last one.
I thought about that this morning.
Thinking about it for the last month?
So this one might be shorter, too, then.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
Oh, no.
That's right. Money's with.
Ready for you.
Ready? Okay. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Oh, start off with, uh, first thing on my plate here would be the solid waste management plan twenty twenty-four annual review. The, uh, sorry about that. Committee met last, uh, on Thursday, November twenty-first and reviewed the, uh, the plan. And there's basically no changes to the review. And, um, I have to basically either have a resolution by the commission sign or the meeting minutes of you guys adopting the, the annual review. And it's gonna be just a little quicker to get a resolution signed, but I'd recommend, or just me, but the committee would recommend to, uh, the board of county commissioners to adopt the twenty twenty-four annual review so I can get everything submitted to K D H E by the fourteenth of December.
So, say it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Let us sign, motion carries.
Thanks again, Betsy, for working on that for me.
Oh, sure.
Really appreciate it.
It's a little bittersweet, relax, you know.
That's right.
Well, did you reach out to the chairman of the city?
Yeah, I haven't heard nothing back from him. Well, Ray said he was gonna talk to him. I haven't heard nothing from nobody. Next thing, it's on our favorite subject, the detention center, Sallyport overhead door. Uh, there's a roll-up overhead door and one of the doors is, uh, has internal parts that malfunctioned and they can't get these parts broke no longer. Uh, so to basically expedite getting that door replaced, uh, Frank reached out to, got two proposals to replace the door and he's been waiting on a third company, but we, we haven't heard back from them. They've never responded, so, uh, the detention center's been working with that one door for the past month. And it's gonna take time for us to get that door ordered and get it installed. So it's kinda messing with their operations over there. So I reached out to Trish and she gave the verbal, uh, to proceed with ordering this door. So again, the two quotes we received was one from Cheney Door at eight thousand five hundred ninety dollars. And then the other one, overhead door at ten thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. So I would recommend to commission to waive the purchasing policy and award this to Cheney Door. At the cost of eight thousand five hundred ninety dollars facility fund. Four to six week lead time to get the door in.
And it's needed.
I'll make motion to approve that.
So, yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Both same side, motion carries.
Hopefully by the end of this month, they'll get it in and get it installed by the time it gets, arrives. Uh, C fifty-two thirty-one oh one, Old Milford Road Bridge Replacement Project. Buyer construction is beginning today to close Old Milford Road, uh, to through traffic. We sent out public notice on Friday, November twenty-second. I believe it was posted in J C Post Monday, uh, following Monday is when it was posted. But, uh, we placed message boards out there on either side of the bridge to basically inform the traveling public of the road being closed on December second. So I was out there the first thing this morning and they have not started closing the road down, but that, they got detour signs and all that to put up. When they get all the signs put up yet today, then they will close it probably later on this afternoon, so. Keep in mind that they're gonna start on this pretty, they're gonna get on it. But reopening, they looked at prob, it's probably gonna reopen early April. Um, just kinda giving everybody a heads up that there's probably gonna be a possible gap. That means, um, nothing's gonna be going on out there. The box is done. They're just waiting for the asphalt plants to fire back up in April so they can get the paving done. So there, possible gap. I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, don't know, but I would imagine that, uh, that'd probably be the thing. Kinda like what happened down on West Lions Creek Road on the other box, bridge project down there, so.
It's real inconvenient for, I know, white people.
Yeah, yeah, so.
How much, um, turn in trees? Is that, I mean, that's part of this project?
Yes, yes.
So, the, the water has been moved?
Water's gone.
All the utilities?
Yes, all the utilities have been moved. Uh, D S and O left a pole in the middle of the channel on the south side, which they moved, they got it moved last week. And then there's an overhead Cox communication cable that's on D S and O's, uh, poles. And everybody feels that D S and O is high enough out of the way, it shouldn't be a problem, so. But with, you know, we'll just have to see what, uh, what the contractor, when they get in there. Be, yeah, they're gonna be tearing out quite a bit of trees in that area, so. Trees shouldn't belong near a drainage structure like that anyway, so all those are issues. On both sides, yes.
Yeah, if they find my ball pole, I want that.
Okay. Keith wants golf balls, but.
You would do video.
Shouldn't be hitting them towards the road.
Hey, I can't even roll it. This is balls hole.
Okay, um, next thing is senior citizens flooring project. It begins today. Um, and all efforts have been made, uh, Friday afternoon, building maintenance went out there and cleared out all of the, the offices and the, in the little conference room they have there, got all the furniture out of there. And I was out there this morning and they were peeling that carpet up, so, um, hopefully it's gonna be done by Friday. So it'd be a pretty quick deal, so we'll keep, uh, commission advise the progress on that. Health Department Flooring and Painting Project that has been completed. So I believe Charles is, Charles and all the employees out there are pretty happy with, with the outcome and the flow of everything, so. Uh, but no, it looks really, really good. Sealed bid opening for the emergency management welding roofing repair project, Danker Roofing. Their bid come in at twenty thousand five hundred sixteen dollars. Stanfield Roofing, they come in at nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and sixty cents. Danker Roofing didn't offer any kind of warranty on labor or materials, uh, for anything on that project. Stanfield, they do offer a one year on labor and five year on materials and at a lower cost. And it's below the C I P, uh, approved amount, so I would recommend Stanfield Roofing be awarded this project.
So.
All in favor? I both same side, motion carries. That's a red flag when somebody doesn't, um, guarantee at least for a year on the labor. I mean, everybody makes mistakes.
Yeah, exactly. But, uh, yeah, Stanfield, they did, uh, offer a little bit there, so. And it, it's, uh, it's a roof repair, it's not a full roof replacement. With a full roof replacement, of course, they're gonna offer a warranty. Um, but it's one of those things where that does speak a little bit, so. You know, and it might, if it was the opposite, they were lower, no warranty, it is kinda, you know, one of them things, which way?
I'd rather have the warranty, just.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're just gonna end up paying more to have them come back out.
Right, right. So on, once they complete everything, the way it should be done, it should be sealed up. Cause they're, they, they're experiencing water leaks right now, so. When, when it all gets sealed up, they should be good to go for quite a while, so it just lengthens the longevity.
There's our insurance company too.
What's that?
Yeah, but what gives in the insurance, you know, K Camp.
Sure.
Know that there's a warranty.
Yeah, yeah. And plus we're doing what we should be doing instead of just.
Yeah, and then getting that in our system of the repairs on roofs and.
Yes.
Preventive stuff.
Yep, a lot of preventive maintenance. Okay, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy. He's got a few items, uh, that he's been working on.
Okay, first I've got the air compressor recommendation from that bid opening that was made. After review of the sealed bids received, we'd recommend approval of central power systems and service bid of thirty-three thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Now, they did have the source well discount. Uh, they were not the lowest bidder. But, uh, shop supervisor Jacob Davis did some research and on the lowest bid on the Sullivan politic air compressor, he couldn't find good reviews on that, so. And their bid from Air Capital was thirty-three thousand three hundred and ten dollars and the difference in that is two hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, so. Not a huge difference. C I P approved amount for that was fifty thousand remaining. C I crew, C I P after purchase would be sixteen thousand and four thirty-four oh four. So came in a little bit lower there. And Foley's bid was forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. That was the three bids that we received. So recommend commission approval to move forward with that purchase.
Say it.
All in favor? Close same side.
Thank you. Uh, courthouse tuck point project pre-construction meeting was held on November twentieth with the selected contractor I M R, as well as Nikki Davenport, Frank Lewis with building maintenance, Corey Trump and myself. Parking as well as project timelines were discussed and I M R has begun setup of safety fence and has a job site trailer on site now. They did say that work could be slow at times or no work due to the winter months, cold weather and stuff, so. We'll keep you updated on that. Assistant shop supervisor position, Brandon McKenna, has been named the, named the new Public Works Roden Bridge Assistant Shop Supervisor. Uh, prior to his promotion, Brandon was the shop mechanic, so we are currently accepting applications for a mechanic's position. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five landville, landfill tree debris contracts. Uh, those have been sent out to known contractors, businesses who utilize the landfill for tree debris, tree debris disposal. And a public notice has also been sent out in attempt to reach those contractors, businesses that may not be interested, may be interested in a contract but are not aware of it, so try to get the word out a little bit more to some more people. Public Works GPS truck equipment tracking cameras, uh, as previously brought before the commission. Uh, the Public Works Department still feels strongly about purchasing dash cameras and associated technology for our equipment. Uh, Sam Sarah has a source well contract and we would recommend to the commission to purchase this top technology through Sam Sarah. In working with them, they offered to give us December our first month free. We were kinda hoping to go with that, so we could get some things put in place and track some information as we start into the winter, winter season with snowstorms and stuff. Uh, the first year for that payment would be twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. From there, our annual fee would be twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars, which encompasses the license, and this is a sixty-month term. With that sixty-month, we did get twenty-nine point nine percent discount overall on the deal. Did send some information to Betsy to review, kinda get some feedback from her. I don't know if she had a chance to review it or not, but. Not yet, okay. Well, with that, we can hold till our next commission meeting and give her some time to review that and make a recommendation again then.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I know there'll be some resistance to those, but I think in the end, people see that they'll help, that it's gonna help them more than hurt them and so.
Yeah, and I think word down there is kinda eased up on it as far as people's feelings towards it and stuff. I know there's been some comments made and some things that happen, well, if we would've had that technology.
Exactly, right, yeah. No, I, I remember the resistance that we had when the police department first got in, but I tell you what, I, I take it every day.
Yeah.
Having that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I think we discussed early on that it's more for the benefit of everybody. Showing, you know, cost fuel, travel time, whatever.
Yeah, there's a lot of benefits to it.
Yeah, there are.
Just tracking.
Just sitting there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Okay, well, that's all.
My Betsy looks over then.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, that's all for me.
Okay. One more thing, just this past Saturday, we had a little SNISE event that, uh, started snowing and stuff in the morning. We just had a couple of trucks go out, uh, Saturday morning and they, they ended the operation early afternoon Saturday. So we had to get some bridges and, and then it ranged from like a half inches on the western side of the county to possibly about an inch and a half on the eastern side of the county, so. Couple of trucks out this, this past Saturday, so. Um, with that, that's all we had. Anything for us?
That wasn't as fast as.
Last week was a short week. Last week was a short week.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna miss you, Cory.
Yeah, it's been an honor and a privilege, it really has, but. We are waiting, we're always waiting, on a cost to repair, uh, sprinkler line in the detention center in the admin area. Uh, a little pinhole developed in the pipe, so we're waiting on a cost from J C I, Josh Controls, to replace that. So we might be reaching out pretty quickly, once we get that cost. They, they have started on the, they got the sheet rock banged out last week, so they're in there painting today. So hopefully by, you know, a couple of weeks, it shouldn't, should be a, a lot taking place, so hopefully we'll. So hopefully by, you know, a couple of weeks, it shouldn't, should be a, a lot taking place. So hopefully we'll be into this month, get, uh, admin, admin area back where it should be. Well, that pinhole in that, uh, sprinkler line, we're, again, we're just waiting on a cost to see what it's gonna cost to replace it or to get it fixed. So we don't wanna damage any, anymore in there, so.
Well, Corey, it's been a privilege. Uh, we've gone a long way over there. A long way.
Yeah, I felt since I've been here, we've been, there's been a lot, I won't say improvements, but a lot of maintenance that, that's been deferred and, and, uh,
Addressing.
We've dressed a lot.
Yep.
A lot. And it's gonna continue, so, um, but, uh, you know, if, if I didn't feel comfortable about leaving, I wouldn't, I'd still be here. So, the way I look at it, I made my bed, I'll lay in it. So it's, again, the warden said I gave him my walking papers, so she said I could walk somewhere.
Hey, I don't blame you.
Well, thank you for your service. I remember when we argued. Um, I mean, you guys weren't here. It was, it was a good choice. Um, it was our choice. Yeah, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I remember my lunchless ride around.
I'm here all week. You wanna go again?
If you need me, sure.
I remember I was scared. I was like, can we stop somewhere?
You drive a car, you're locked.
That's right. Don't stop.
Well, I appreciated that. That was a very big eye opener then.
Ben, I encourage that. I really do. Every once in a while, we'll get out and go see what we have to deal with. You know, it's, we're not stuck in a building, so we're, we're scattered all over the place, so.
I was going through some paperwork, trying to clean house. And then, I come across something he did and, um, how many miles of road that we're in charge of? And I think it was three hundred and seventy miles.
Combined, yeah.
Hundred and seventeen asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
Well, right.
Two hundred and.
Thirty-two or thirty-six.
No, we're two hundred and thirty gravel.
I think the public doesn't sometimes realize just how much ground they're covering.
Yeah. But we'll get there.
Yeah.
I mean, there'll always be something. I mean, it's always, it's always.
Oh, yeah.
So it's.
Yeah.
That way in daily life with anybody.
Yeah.
Always something. Well, thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back for the corner of you.
All right.
Last is long. Eleven forty-five. That's a barn.
Yeah, it's interesting. It is interesting. Sometimes it's a little boring, but, no, the last part just got me, cause we're, we're just concerned about our four miles of gravel.
We got miles and miles.
Two hundred pieces on that sound.
Yeah, so, and, you know, they just, you know, like getting new software, we're able to, you used to have to, you have to look and see whether or not the last time you heard guys is, um, ready to dispose gravel. Isn't going to be up again. But now we can, and then they can, you know, put it on a sketch pad. So.
I hope.
Well, it's bad. You know, you know.
Well, they just, where we're at, he digs into the road so much and brings up so much broken brass. And then he just sprinkles it back and forth across the road. So it is really causing. And at some point in time, we're gonna have to talk about our bridge. Line pretty much is just a couple of years ago. I mean, I think they put Band-Aids on it for several years. I, I think it's, is it on the lens? I think so. We'll have to look, cause we've got so many out there. But I know, um, but yeah, you can always have to call down there and talk to them about that. I know I did. I talked to them about when you guys helped them issue about that. I let them know. Um, but yeah.
We got, for sure. But I know if each bridge has, you know, they have a, a schedule on getting it fixed. So, you know, and making sure from an outside, you know, engineer firm, and they come in and walk and say, hey, this is, this needs to be done.
Yeah, our big deal is there's so much, so many nails that gonna, and boy, we grab on it. Our tires just.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure.
Break lots of the week and then having that out there in the weather, you know.
Yeah, that does it. Warm and hot, warm and hot, yeah.
And it's, and it's on historical.
Yeah, yeah, we've got some cool bridges.
It's, it's the most photographed bridge in great county.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is.
Yeah, I know it's a cool bridge.
Okay, so basically we're done. I mean.
Well, um, right now, uh, the next thing we have is a, um, executive session for a, a, um, evaluation that we're giving to one of our, um, employees. And then they're gonna present a check for insurance. And we're gonna have a staff meeting. So, yeah.
And you guys know, I mean, um, so you don't have to get out in the weather, but one more, we love to have people to come in, but, um, it's on the YouTube video. It's on YouTube. So, I mean, you can always watch it at your convenience and fast forward. Well, it's just kinda cool because we've.
No, I, I wish more people would come and understand.
We, we've been elected before, but we were working.
Yeah, oh.
And so you didn't have to.
Right.
And I think we're only in name. I, I don't think there's anything. I'm the treasurer and I think all of our money goes to the county.
Yeah, but anytime you spend it, that's when you guys, you know, I think they do that as a, as, you know, service to the, to the township.
Right.
And then, you know, just to have, you know, accountability and stuff, but, I mean.
I'm gonna step in and see exactly what I need to be doing.
For years, for years, I've been on the Reefer Cemetery.
Oh, uh-huh, yeah.
For years.
Yeah.
And, um, they just give us like two thousand and seven dollars a year just for mowing.
For mowing, yeah. Yeah.
And then we just have to meet up with Jim Rethner. He's in charge of us when, to mark out graves and, or bury some.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then how often does your township meet? Do you guys meet quarterly or?
We just meet at all.
Oh, you don't meet at all?
No, so, so.
But we, we meet, the cemetery.
The cemetery, yeah, I do, yeah, your cemetery. But not, I don't think there's ever been a township meeting. I don't even know.
Once a year.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, most townships when they, and, and I, I'm not an expert on townships.
Right.
I know when I've talked to other people, they, some townships take care of their own roads.
Right.
So, because the county does, and you guys probably don't have as many, um, responsibilities as some others, you know what I mean?
And that's kinda what I think. I don't think.
Yeah, and township truly is smart.
Yeah. Other ones, yeah, yeah.
But I'm, we're just gonna step in and just, yeah. Say, okay, exactly what do I need to do as a, as a, what are you?
And nobody told me, well, Florence was in your seat when, when I got elected last time. And, uh, they didn't have any duties for the trustee to do, but I looked it up and in the past, the trustee was in charge of checking the, the bridges in their township.
Yeah, and seeing if there was any issues that needed to address. Yeah, so, yeah, maybe we should do, you know, maybe something like, um, a pamphlet on, on different things that, that the township should be, you know.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. You know, obviously a good thing to have, um, Courtney about, cause she's the one that, you know, does the budget.
Right, right, yeah.
But yeah, just something that, uh, yeah, this is like, you know, when you put on a board, some of the boards that you get on there, like here, you're on this board, but you don't.
You don't know what your responsibility is. And I know, I, I've been treasurer before and basically they said, you don't have any.
Your money.
Your money goes straight to the county. So really you have no.
Yeah, but what is the money supposed to be for? I mean, obviously there's some kind of, of responsibility you guys have out there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, that'd be good to know.
Last year, we got crazy and we just decided out of the clear blue to, um, decorate the bridge. It was, it was so fresh.
Oh, I bet.
People went nuts. Like, oh my God, did you post any pictures?
Uh, it's gonna be good.
This year I think you're gonna go crazy, I'd like.
Put, um, solar lights.
Oh, all the way down and then reeds on each side.
To north and to south end. But, yeah, I think.
This year I'd like to.
Go, go up and over. We should like make.
Make sure you, um, uh, check with Corey about that, cause there might be some kind of height restriction to put, is it, well, I guess if it's, yeah, I, well, just make sure. I don't know about hitting anything.
Yeah, cause it's tall. It's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it is tall. I just want anything to get hooked on sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that's unfair.
Cause I'd gotta be pulled to do a big reef.
Yeah. Yeah, that would look really pretty.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Lit up, wreathed both ends. Yeah, there was a, a bridge that looks just like that. It was shorter over, where Keith Devine's place. Where, where the road used to come from Ogden and cross right there on Clark Street.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, well, if, if you look sometime when you're on the bypass at Ogden, looking back in the timber in the wintertime, you can see it.
Oh, you can.
Iron bridge there. That's a big one, cause it actually used to cross this, the Kansas before the Kansas moved to the fifty-one. But right there at Keith Devine's, I was out running, the bunch of my cross-country kids, and we started at, um, Bullers. And we came in and ended up at Keith Devine's. But the, the creek was up and there's no decking on that bridge. We just went up the rivets and ran the length of it and came down there sliding. So there's nothing up there.
I did that.
He's like, I get it.
Wasn't I talking to you that?
Having races over the, like that old bridge up on me.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know how true it is, but my dad told us, when they were kids, I'd take bicycles and ride them up over the marches. And I'm like, it's pretty firmly, but.
Yeah, he used to walk it all the time. He'd go up and.
The one, the one on, um, Grant Avenue, they had two marches. Um, I used to work at the commissary when they'd put it in the, um, the old riding, the old riding stables.
Oh, yeah.
They're on main posts. And if my dad didn't come back to pick me up, I'd just walk home. But when I got to the Republican, well, that would, yeah, it'd be a Republican river, because right beside us where it dumps into the Kansas. I'd walk over the top of it. It's a wonder I didn't cause any wrecks, cause people.
I know.
All right, are we ready?
When I was a kid, that's what you do.
You still are.
Yeah.
Ready to go?
All right.
Okay.
We'll stop.
Thanks for having us.
Well, thanks for being there.
We'll see you tomorrow. It's fun. I learned a little today, so, there you go.
At least you learned something. I don't know that I always did.
Well, I, you know, you, like I was telling Tricia, we're so worried about our four miles of gravel. You know, cause, and our bridge. That's our, and that's our, that's our deal.
Yeah.
Um, and of course, it's the most important to us. We don't care about the other two hundred and thirty-two miles.
Okay.
You get that. But now that we know, and I had no clue that, that there was that many miles of road.
How many is?
There's only so much in our rock budget, but.
Well, and that's, see, and that's, yeah, yeah. And it's hard out there. The roads have really gotten bad out there.
I know.
So.
Whenever South feet cows, it's like, oh my gosh.
Yeah. I know.
It's just ongoing events.
Yeah, it is. And what do you do? I mean, what do you do? At least we've got gravel out there now. Before we had nothing.
It'll create it.
It'll wash it.
Yeah.
They got an open door down there.
Yeah, they're good. Like whenever we've had problems with the bridge, we call and go, y'all, we got deck problems. You need to get out here. But they Band-Aid it, so we'll solve it.
I know.
It's bad, but.
Well, have a good day.
Well, you too.
You said you had an Amway you were filming?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
Actually, they went out.
Can I actually have one?
Why is much of it out? He promised him one man hat, but, and he used to work for Wobos.
Wow.
And he worked for Tasty, but, um, anyway. I asked, called in and asked him, and it's, and it's, he come with, uh, he, uh, deal. Well, that was only. Or I think.
Oh.
And tried calling and they, nobody was.
Was there, yeah.
And then I went to the minister for Saturday.
Oh, really?
Same with Granny. I needed some protein.
Coming over friends, yeah, you know.
Uh, well, I remember she went.
Anyway, it's main tractor. I used to feed cows, so. We're improvising.
I was gonna say, so how are you feeding them?
I think I think it's get steer with them.
Oh.
Hello.
Good morning.
How are you?
How are you, Patrick?
Yes. Okay, I was just making sure I'm in the right.
You're in the right place now.
Sure.
Great.
I will let Gary know that you're here.
Yeah. Were you over at Gary's office earlier? No, I just got here. Okay.
Royce, glad to see you.
Oh, thank you.
So you'll feel very welcome.
Appreciate the warm welcome.
And the check you have.
Yes. Wish I could bring one every time.
I know, right?
So how long have you been with K Camp?
It's been a whole month now.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I just started. You just threw me to the wolves.
Have you ever been to Junction City?
Have I what?
Ever been to Junction City?
Oh, I've been to Junction City a lot, yeah.
As long as you're giving us money, we are the wolves.
Thank you. I come bearing great gifts.
Bearing great gifts.
So what is your title?
I am the risk manager.
Risk manager. Risk manager.
Okay. Yes. Gary.
Gary.
Oh, nice to meet you. How you doing?
Pretty good.
Heard a lot about you.
Uh oh. More?
Uh oh.
More and David.
Oh, David?
Yeah.
Can I talk nice about me?
Oh, yeah.
Good. See, somebody likes me.
Somebody.
I sent you an email this year. You must not have been in the office, huh?
I've been on the road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fucking mad, other.
My office, you walk over together. And I thought, yeah, he's probably coming from someplace else. No problem.
Yeah, was that potluck? Really, this one? So. Thanks, though. I appreciate it.
Oh, there you go. Hello.
It's her.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, you can come on up here, stand, sit, wherever, whatever you like.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thanks for having me. My name is Patrick Smith. I'm the new risk manager for K Camp. And we'd like to personally congratulate you guys on meeting the criteria for the Risk Management Award, which is normally given out to a lot of our members who take the steps to reduce property losses and liabilities that are normally reported to K Camp. So I'd like to present you with this check for seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents for helping us to reduce any type of cost and coverages for your county. And I thank Gary also for coordinating a lot of the tasks that it takes to get this award. There's only nine counties that actually are receiving this out of the eighty counties that we have, so.
Oh, wow.
So.
So Gary does a good job whipping us in shape.
Yeah.
So, appreciate that.
You guys have any questions or anything for me? I've been here a whole month, like I said, so I can answer what I can.
No, I, I just, I, you know, I'm sure that, you know, Gary will be able to build a relationship with you and continue on and be able to continue to get those checks, which is nice, because we've gotten one every year since I've been here, so that's been amazing, so.
I can give this to you.
You want to give it to me, then I'll maybe.
Yeah.
You know, we trust Gary with this, so you can give it to him.
Okay, Gary. Thanks for having me.
Yes, thank you. Go here, I'll take a picture of you guys.
Is there one of that big checks?
Yeah, I need the lot of size checks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Patrick, good luck. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thanks for the warm welcome.
More for future good, so.
Yeah, she's been showing her folks. But she's been doing part-time, so. Was that his jacket?
I was Gary.
You said that's yours?
The blue one. One of them, yeah.
About per diem rates for that. KDOC prisoners. Don't know if it's something to do with it. I don't want to rush you if it's something that I don't think it's. But we do need to get paid.
She don't mean the other?
Yeah.
Maybe you didn't have a package with this new phone or something.
You guys put in the.
Call her. They should stand up.
How you doing?
Hey, good. How was Thanksgiving?
It was good.
Good.
Good, very small compared to what we normally have. We usually have about thirty-five or forty and we only had fifteen. How about you?
It's good. It's been up in Kansas City with family so.
All good.
So.
Oh my gosh, no wonder it's so cold outside.
Huh?
I said, no wonder it's so cold outside.
You're welcome. Is that training over at emergency management?
What training?
Our mandatory cybersecurity.
It's a staff meeting we're having here. And it's about cyber, the cybersecurity, um, we're having a work session on what is needed for our mandatory.
It's inherent.
Disaster.
Oh, I thought it was actual training.
Well, well, yeah, you're gonna learn what you need to be doing because nobody's doing it right now.
I'm gonna hire somebody, that's what I'm gonna do because I'm not somewhere near them, so. Let's check this out.
So you, so, uh, you don't know what's going on in your office because basically that's what it's about.
No, I do. It's called Next Tech and they handle my cyber world.
It's not all about, it's not all about cybersecurity.
I pay people for that, Trish.
It's not all about cyber stuff.
I pay people for that.
Well, you can pay whoever you want for that, but it needs to be done. It's not, it, this isn't a, we might do it. It's mandatory statewide. That we have a disaster plan, whether it's cyber, a cyber attack or a tornado, um, just. Being able to get back up and running and, and we have to have sets in place, so.
So it's.
And I'm sure that's why Joanne is here. I mean, not Joanne.
I'm sorry.
Your, your right-hand woman.
She is.
I know she is.
I saw something about you.
Yeah, and it was like lunch is what it was. Food, I was promised food.
You are gonna get something. Are you angry?
Angry.
Oh, I know. I've been around her and she's been angry before.
Krista needs a hug.
She does need a hug. I don't need a hug.
I'm gonna give you a hug.
You need a hug, Sam.
Oh, hug.
You need a hug is the, uh, no, I don't think so. Work session in the coop. Well, look at this. Mark that I'm also good early.
Yeah, that's why it's so cold outside.
And you're welcome.
We love you so much and then like we're late man yelling at us about where the meeting is.
Then he yelled drugs. I just didn't think we could have food in here.
Our owl's gone until we see if there's anybody from the, um, public.
Oh, bro.
Oh, man. How was your Thanksgiving?
Are you still speaking, Eddie?
Yes.
It was fine. How was yours?
Well, wait, don't talk to her till she eats.
You can't see me. Oh, crap.
It was cool.
I have some food.
Oh.
Betsy, I'm gonna hang this. Thank you, thank you. I guarantee that it's not the right one because they're totally different. And so there's a guarantee.
Do you eat pizza with a fork?
Yeah, I do that method.
Do you need a fork?
No, I would say if you eat pizza with a fork, I would disown. I need a pool skate.
We need to hear back the other departments that I emailed you on this morning and they'll all have at least one representative. Are you ready for it? They're, they're totally bored, just waiting on us.
Yeah, I, we just got sent that letter. I know it's dated, the first of September. And then I asked how many does it expire and they said as soon as possible, so it probably shouldn't have been done this summer. So.
Yeah, it's the top of the draft first.
Yeah. Yeah. So I don't know, Jeanette's the one that sent that to me, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Well, I don't know, does. Yeah, I, I didn't want to rush to it. I mean, I just got it, so it's going to take, but, um, I.
Probably not.
And I, Tammy was on there too, so she might, I don't know if she's involved in that or not, but.
Oh, thank you.
And then I just sent it.
Shoot, you got a pink slip and I got a.
I know. Um, I'm gonna leave you here to the scene inside your.
Not leaving. Created a sign-up sheet for everybody to RSVP.
So you guys, I mean, of course.
Oh, I didn't know. Let's try email because we got time on reading. Or it's not, she RSVP'd on behalf of all the teams. Because I didn't want to assume anything. So I asked her, she suggested I'll be there. I nominate correct. If I ask, we have coo trained the entire. A lot of teams.
You're hilarious, just on your name.
You guys can go ahead and eat if you want. That way we're not all trying to get on at once.
Don't you say that, dude.
I'd say red page study. For holiday. Yeah, you guys. If you RSVP, your name is on this list, so please come and sign that you're here.
Sorry.
And if you didn't RSVP, just write your name at the bottom.
Did RSVP, nobody's gonna be bothered.
I RSVP under me. I'm good.
It's taking a while. What about you?
I eat too much, but got lots of family time, so.